Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
And Counselor Sabby George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. And Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zachem.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. So at this time, I would ask all counselors and guests to please rise as Counselor Zachem comes to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation, please remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, colleagues, guests. I'm excited again to welcome and introduce Rabbi Daniel Klein here in the chamber. Rabbi Klein is the Rabbi in Residence at the Boston Synagogue located in my district in the West End. He's also the Director of Student Life at Hebrew College. He's the Director of Admission for the College's Rabbinical School. And after studying and working in Chicago, he was originally from Newton, San Francisco, and New York, Rabbi Klein found his way back to the Boston area. We live with his wife Jen and their two children. He brings us a wide range of knowledge and experience, engagement in our downtown neighborhoods. And I'm honored to have him join us here today to share prayer and a few thoughts before we begin our session. Rabbi?
Esteemed council members and guests, it is a great privilege to be here with you today to have the honor of opening this meeting with some words of prayer. Thank you, Counselor Zachem, again for this tremendous honor and for being a friend to my synagogue, the Boston Synagogue, and more importantly, to its members and the citizens of this city. For millennia, the myth of the Israelites' exodus from Egypt has captured the imagination of those struggling for freedom, for rights, for dignity. And while this epic tale rightly fuels and sustains our aspirations for a better world, we do well to remember that the story does not end with the miraculous crossing of the Sea of Reeds and the drowning of Pharaoh's oppressive army in it. The story actually culminates three months later, after leaving Egypt, when the Israelites arrive at Mount Sinai to receive the law, a story that the Jewish community reads this week as part of the annual cycle of reading the Torah, the five books of Moses. The tale concludes, in other words, with the taking on of the prescriptions for a sacred life that we are obligated to fulfill. It ends, in essence, not with freedom, but with responsibility, responsibility for our lives and the life well-lived. In our world, the quest for rights, the right to education, to health care, to security, to a decent living wage, to dignity, appropriately occupy our thoughts, our words, and actions. One of the gifts of our country, in many ways, this very city being the source of it, has given the world is a rights-based social contract, a commitment to ensure individual rights as a community. But we also know, all too well, that once the evocative and elevating force of the rights rhetoric has done its work, we so often, too often, prove unable or unmotivated as a society to realize those rights. We affirm them, but don't always fulfill them in practice. More than granting the right to these basic needs, religious tradition comes along to remind us that we, as individuals and as a society, are obligated, that we have a mitzvah, to use the language of Jewish tradition, to realize, to implement, to fulfill those rights, so that people can actually live in dignity. Esteemed council members, you have chosen and been entrusted with the critical work of helping this great city live up to the promise of its vision. As much as you are tasked with establishing the rights we all should have, you are in a unique and powerful position to be responsible for enacting those rights. My prayer for you today and every day is that you keep your eyes fixed on the gaps between our aspirations and our reality, even and especially when the rest of us may look away or get distracted. I pray that you remain steadfast and devoted to the work of realizing the promises we make as a society. And I pray that you find inspiration from taking up the mantle of our collective obligation to each other. May you be blessed in your work, and may we come to be an even greater city through your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi, for your inspiring and motivating message. And now Counselor Zachem, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the [bell dings] One nation, united, equal, free, and just as well.
Thank you, Rabbi. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0162, message in order to reduce the FY16 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $9,35,582 to provide funding in the police department for the FY16 cost items contained in the arbitration award of the JLMC case number 12-2078 on December 22, 2015, which amends the salary schedule for the Boston Police Detectives Benevolence Society filed in the office of the city clerk on January 20, 2016.
Docket 0162 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0163, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $9,35,582 to provide funding in the, excuse me, in the police department for the FY16 cost items contained in the arbitration award of the JLMC case number 12-2078 in December 22, 2015, which amends the salary schedule for the Boston Police Detectives Benevolence Society. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2010 through July 30, 2013, and July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016. The contract award provides for an overall salary increase of approximately 28.7% over six years of the contract filed in the office of the city clerk on January 20, 2016.
Docket 0163 will be sent to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0164, message in order authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $75 million in order to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, and interest on the bonds or any other obligation to be refunded.
Docket 0164 will be sent to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0165, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Board Building Authority, known as MSBA, statement of interest for their accelerated repair program for the following schools: West Roxbury Education Complex in West Roxbury, Jackson Man K-8 in Austin, McCormick Middle School in Dorchester, Devon Elementary in Dorchester, Boston Latin School in Boston, Channing Elementary in High Park, and James F. Condon Elementary in South Boston. The statements of interest described and explained the deficiencies and priority category for which the City of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future.
Docket 0165 will be sent to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0166, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $426,558 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Funds for the FY15 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, known as JAG, for the purpose of supporting crime prevention and law enforcement.
Docket 0166 will be sent to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0167, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $283,812 from the U.S. Department of Justice FY15 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program.
Docket 0167 will be sent to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0168, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $195,000 from the United Way of Massachusetts Bay in Merrimack Valley for the purpose of supporting the mayor's food security action plan through the hire of a food security action plan fellow.
Docket number 0168 will go to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0169, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend grants not to exceed $100,000 from various donations to the City of Boston's Office of Neighborhood Services to support Boston Shines 2016.
Docket 0169 will go to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 0170, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $22,500 from the U.S. Department of Justice for the Office of Justice Programs and pass through from Massachusetts State Police to support the FY15 Paul Coverdell National Forensic Science Improvement Program.
Docket 0170 will be sent to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Madam President, would you like me to read several of these?
Yes, 0171 through 0175, please.
Thank you. Docket number 0171, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 10:15 a.m. on Wednesday, January 20, 2016, until 11:30 p.m. on Thursday, January 21, 2016. Docket number 0172, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Mark Siomo as trustee of the Boston Neighborhood Jobs Trust for a term expiring January 12, 2018. Docket number 0174, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of James Sullivan as Director of Intergovernmental Relations effective January 4, 2016. And docket number 0175, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Carl Spector as Commissioner of the Environment Department effective December 4, 2015.
Docket numbers 0171 through 0175 will be placed on file.
And somehow, Madam President, I skip docket number 73.
Apologies.
Docket number 0173, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Trin Nguyen as a trustee of the Boston Neighborhood Jobs Trust for a term expiring January 12, 2018.
Docket 0173 will also be placed on file.
And docket number 0176, I believe everyone has received a replacement page, and it should read, "Notice was received from the City Council President Wu of the appointment of Josh Zachem as a trustee of the Boston Neighborhood Housing Trust for a term expiring December 31, 2017."
Docket 0176 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0177, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 9.
0177 will be placed on file. We can go all the way through 0180, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0178, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 16, 2015. Docket number 0179, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 4, 2016. And docket number 0180, notice was received from City Council President Wu confirming the initiative for a competitive inner-city, ICIC, currently has no business or proposals in front of the City of Boston or the Boston City Council.
Docket numbers 0177, 178, 179, and 180 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0181, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for a city council action on the designation of the Winthrop Carter Building, 1 Water Street, as a landmark, in effect after February 12, 2016, if not acted upon.
Docket number 0181 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0182, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for the city council's action on the designation of Alva Kittbridge House, 10 Lynnwood Street, Roxbury, as a landmark. It will be in effect after February 12, 2016, if not acted upon.
Docket number 0182 will also be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development. Madam Clerk, please record that Counselor Jackson is here, and then we can proceed to matters recently heard for possible action.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0103, message in order authorizing the City of Boston's Transportation Department to accept and expend a grant of $95,600 from the Boston College Neighborhood Improvement Fund to support Hubway Bike Share Stations in Brighton.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We had a hearing the other day. Thanks, Counsel Flaherty, for attending. Stephanie Seskin from BTD runs the bike program now, and Vinit Gupta, who we all know from transportation, was at the hearing. At this time, we had a lot of discussion regarding the placement and the impact of the bike stations in and around our city, causing parking problems, possible business loss, safety issues, people pulling the bikes off of the racks. Our main concern was that we felt that BTD and Hubway in general doesn't have a very good communication with district city councils, as well as they at large city councils. As we know, putting a bike rack in the right place is a wonderful thing for the city, and putting a bike rack in the wrong place can be an awful detriment to a business. So I'm asking for this to pass with the stipulation that Hubway and BTD take better care of making sure that the district city councils, as well as the city councils at large, are informed of where they're placing these new stations. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to thank the chairman for the hearing and for those stipulations recently in my neighborhood. They placed a Hubway, a 20-bike station, like on a very small one-way street. It's a very heavily-traveled street, very dangerous. I want to thank, though, the folks from BTD, specifically Kim Foltz, for coming out and kind of perusing the neighborhood for more appropriate sites that present less safety problems, less problems to the businesses. And I appreciate what the chairman did in so stipulating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Madam Clerk? All right, Counsel McCarthy moves to adopt the committee report and pass docket 0103. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Docket number 0103 has passed.
Docket number 0102, message in order authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept and expend a grant of $400,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for the renovations to Robert's Playground located in the neighborhood of Dorchester.
Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, January 26, the Committee of Parks, Recreation, and Transportation held a hearing on docket number 0102, went to thank Counsel Campbell and Counsel Anissa S. George. I believe it was their first hearing, and I hope you learned a lot from that hearing, held a running hearing, trying not to be really long. But it was to accept the grant, and Counsel, I'm sorry, Flaherty was there, and Counsel O'Malley, thank you for attending this hearing, because parks are very important to the City of Boston. But it was to accept the grant for $400,000 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for the renovation of Robert's Playground in Dorchester. Aldo Bridgman from Parks Department was there, and he spoke to us in regards to the grant. The grant will be used to offset the cost of renovations estimated to be $1.3 million for all the construction that they planned there. The plan is to renovate the Eastern 3rd section of the park, and it will include two brand-new state-of-the-art children's play area, a new plaza, a brand-new water spray area, two basketball courts, and a tennis court with special lighting, and 15 new trees. This grant has been hugely helpful in the past. In my own district in East Boston, we did LePresty Park. We had a soccer field, and it's beautiful. I feel that this grant will be a great thing, not only for the neighborhood of Dorchester, where the park is located, but also to the city as a whole. So I please strongly urge passage of this talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina moves to accept the committee report and pass docket 0102. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0102 has been passed. Motion, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk. And just a note to everyone, at this point in the agenda, we're going to take a few items out of order to make sure that Counsel Presley does not, like the chair, miss a flight. And so we will hear docket 0188, followed by 0192, 0193, and then the first late-file matter, and then resume the regular agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Would you like me to read?
Separately, please.
Docket number 0188, Counsel Presley offered the following resolution in support of Senate Bill 2107 and House Bill 1733, an act to establish pay equity.
Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to take a few matters out of order. I can honestly say, in 2016, I am incredulous that we are still debating this issue, debating whether or not women should receive equal pay for equal work. Today, I'm introducing this resolution in support of House Bill 1733, sponsored by Representative Jay Livingstone of Boston, Rep. Ellen Story of Amherst and its accompanying Senate legislation, Bill 2107, sponsored by Senators Jalen of Somerville and Spilka of Ashland. I want to thank the makers of this bill and the entire Equal Pay Coalition for their advocacy throughout the coalition. You all should have received from MassNow, a one-pager unpacking the details of this bill. I'll attempt now to provide you with the abridged sort of Cliff Notes version. Equal pay for comparable work, where work is defined and aims to close the gap between fundamentally similar jobs where women are paid less. Pay transparency, which is a proven strategy to allow workers and employees to resolve disparities without expensive and time-consuming litigation. I want to highlight from the MassNow one-pager, one of the key impacts of pay inequity. In Massachusetts, as of 2013, 40% of households with children under the age of 18 included mothers, who were the primary breadwinner for their family. In addition, 57% of low-wage workers in Massachusetts are women. So this is about stabilizing our families, our communities, and our Commonwealth. And while I certainly do recognize that there are multiple sides to any issue, I urge anyone who is conflicted to consider two things: fairness, and then the mothers, the sisters, the daughters, all of the women in your life, when considering this legislation. I am asking for suspension of the rules and passage of this resolution, as there is an expected vote imminent on this matter tomorrow at the State House. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley moves for suspension and adop-- apologies. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in unity and solidarity with Counsel Presley around this. I think when we look at specific neighborhoods, there was a State of Black Boston report in 2010 that noted black families in the City of Boston, out of those families, 72% of those households were headed by women. And so when we look at children, there's obviously a strong connection there with mom's pay and her ability to make a living, and how well and the outcomes of those children. And as the Chair of Education, I think it's absolutely critical, and one of those leading indicators is household income. And we know that women are working just as hard, and oftentimes harder, as their male counterparts in their roles. So I stand to add my name, but also emphatically to support the maker of this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Jackson's name. Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name. Please add Counsel Baker's name. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Zachem. And please add the chair's name. At this time, Counsel Presley moves for suspension and adoption. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem. Madam President, we have the
Docket number 0188 has been adopted. Docket number 0192, please, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0192, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss decreasing income inequality in the City of Boston and identifying best practices for economic mobility, workforce development, asset building, and retention.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's apropos that I would be filing this hearing order following the resolution that we just passed. I'm sure it comes as zero surprise that the prompt for this hearing is the recent Brookings Institute report entitled "City and Metropolitan Inequality on the Rise Driven by Declining Incomes." This report placed Boston at the top of the list as the most unequal city in America. Now, we all know declining incomes are widening the gap between top household, middle, and bottom income. The gap between the haves and have-nots has grown to their largest margins, and without intervention by our mayor and this body, this tale of two cities will be more than an emerging narrative. It will be a permanent reality. We are both, our mayor, our council, individually and collectively, grappling with how to address this issue, both out of moral imperative, but really out of economic necessity. Adverse impacts of this growing wealth and income inequality include a narrower tax base, less economically diverse classrooms, which are a proven way to close the achievement gap, as well as artificially inflated prices for both private goods and services. We need to better understand and address the drivers of income inequality in the City of Boston. I want us to be intentional partners in efforts to raise wages, develop skills in our citizens for the jobs of the future, to empower residents to grow, and to retain assets like home ownership and saving. ownership and savings. Now, I know the mayor shares our concern and commitment. I'm encouraged by the establishment of the Minimum Wage Task Force, ongoing salary negotiation workshops. Just here at City Hall, there were 30 women last night that were here to attain those skills to more effectively negotiate for their salaries. The mayor's establishment of the Business Expansion Toolkit, the Small Business Center, the work of the Office of Workforce Development, the Office of Financial Empowerment with the empowerment centers that we have throughout the city, and the Boston Tax Help Coalition. Now, I do believe it would be beneficial for all of us to learn and better understand the current efforts by the city, as well as best practices from other municipalities about how to provide relief from the symptoms of income inequality, but more importantly, how to eliminate it. I look forward to having this hearing to better coordinate our short- and long-term response to this urgent crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Checking to make sure no one would like to speak on this, and Counsel O'Malley, sign on. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel O'Malley's name. Please add Counsel Asabi George. Add Counsel Jackson. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Zachem. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Lamatina. And please add the Chair's name. Docket number 0192 will be assigned to the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development.
...for hearing to review and discuss the FY17 Boston Public Schools Special Education Budget and identify solutions to ensure equitable transitions of BPS youth.
Counsel Presley.
Madam President, if you have been a part of working sessions and the hearings that I've been doing around this issue to ensure the equitable transitions of our students receiving special education services, really, this is just about making sure that we are doing our due diligence and in constitutional compliance to ensure that our students receiving special education services are successfully transitioning into post-secondary, into workforce, and to independent lives. And so this work is ongoing. We'll be doing a site visit to Newton North, which has been nationally heralded as one of the best models to support our sped students in their transition. So for all intents and purposes, although it is a newly-written hearing order, this is work we've been doing, and I thank all of you for your support and partnership.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And I want to compliment Counsel Presley on the work that she's been doing around equitable transitions for our special education students. Madam President, we are in a dire crisis relative to our school budget. The proposal in real terms is a $50 million deficit. And I would note that the budget is over $1 billion. And as noted and proposed, the $13.5 million increase, if we were to look at inflation, 3% increase would be $30 million. So the proposal is for $13.5 million. So yes, it is more than we had last year, but it doesn't even keep up with inflation. In addition, it doesn't keep up with the predictable costs that we've already signed up for with the contracts with teachers. For special education students, and note, it is improper to look at the city of Boston versus other large cities, because we're the best when it comes to special education as a state, and we do more for our special education students than any other state in the Union. And so I don't particularly like to be compared to other states that aren't doing as well. I think it's really important to look at what is going to happen in this budget. Increases in class sizes for autistic children. We have a 1 to 9 ratio. The proposal is to increase that ratio. We do, and mind you, people send young people to our schools, because we do the best in that space. And our young people have better outcomes and are able to enter the workforce, enter schools after, where other cities aren't able to do that. In addition, we have schools that have come to many of us, like Boston Community Leadership Academy, who's facing an over $1 million cut. Understand, if you cut a librarian from a high school, they lose their accreditation automatic. And that's what we're putting our young people into. This is, the choices ahead of us are horrible and bad decisions that school leaders are being asked to make. The special education piece is something that we should take pride in as a city, and we, and I believe, a budget is a value statement. It tells us exactly what we feel and what we value. And if we don't value these young people, then we can go forward with what we're doing. But if we value those young people as a body, I believe that we have to stand up and look at what we're doing now, and the fact that this budget doesn't provide us the opportunity to do even what we're doing now for those young people into the future. And so I thank Counsel Presley for bringing this specific group of young people up, but we are in jeopardy of hitting reverse in the city of Boston on our education versus moving forward in the great way that we've been doing in the past. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Would you like to add your name? Counsel Jackson?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Jackson's name. Counsel Linehan.
Yeah, just for a point of clarification, Madam President, is this for FY17 through you, the Chair, or FY16? FY16 would be what we're doing now versus FY17, what's planning to be done. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So the clarification is this is looking ahead to what will come before the council for the next fiscal year. And there were a number of people who wanted to sign on. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, and please add the Chair. Docket number 0193 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. So at this point, again, this is the last meeting where we are not running a tight ship after this meeting, it's going to be exactly by the agenda. At this point, we're going to adopt the late-file agenda so that we can take the first one of those out of order, and then we'll go back to the normal procedure. So there are three late-file matters in the hands of the Clerk, which, in the absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the first late-file matter.
Offered by Counsel Michael F. Flaherty and Counsel Aiyana Presley, in the City of Boston and City Council, Resolution Recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Whereas President Barack Obama issued a presidential proclamation on December 31, 2015, declaring January National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, be it resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled declares January 27, 2016 as a Human Trafficking Awareness Day in the city of Boston in order to educate the public about this crime against humanity that does not leave Boston untouched.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. If we could move for suspension, Rule 12, to include Counsel Baker as a third co-sponsor.
Any objection? Counsel Baker has been added to the first late-file matter as a third sponsor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the last council meeting in January, again, the same month which President Barack Obama proclaimed as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Human trafficking, as we all know, is a global crisis that exploits millions of Americans each year. And since 2005, we've, right here in Boston, over 450 children have been identified as victims. So this is an issue that's very difficult to combat because of its secretive nature and also because of internet-savvy predators. So it's much more important to acknowledge its dangers and raise awareness throughout our city. I've worked on this issue for many years, starting as a former prosecutor, as an assistant district attorney, and also in this council, specifically as it pertains to target Johns, who solicit prostitutes, and focusing on sort of the demand and determining the demand side of that equation, to the point where we actually had led efforts on this council to have the vehicles of Johns towed and impounded, so when they head back to their suburban communities without a car or in a taxi, you know, their spouse or loved one is looking out the window and asking them why they're not in their car. And so, just again, putting pressure and putting deterrence on that. So I also want to take this opportunity to publicly commend and applaud Counsel Presley for adding and creating additional light to this issue, along with Counsel Baker, for his collaboration on efforts to stop all forms of human trafficking. So with that, and I'll defer to the co-sponsors, but moving for suspension and adoption that would declare today, January 27, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day in the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Presley.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I thank the lead sponsor for his work in the past and for inviting myself and Counsel Baker to sign on to this. I do just, I mean, this is one of the issues, I mean, I'm very proud of the work that this body has done on this issue prior to my coming on to the council. Counsel Feeney, her leadership. I thank Counsel, former President, Counsel President Michael Ross for allowing me to create the Committee on Healthy Women Families and Communities, where I could name in that committee specifically the issue of human trafficking. I want to thank the advocates, My Life, My Choice. I want to thank the Family Justice Center. I want to thank the Human Trafficking Unit at BPD. And I want to thank our mayor, because it is very expedient for mayors to want to only put forward a sanitized version of their city. And this is a scourge on our city. And thanks to the Walsh administration's leadership, we are now one of a handful of cities that are a part of a broader coalition, cities empowered against sexual exploitation. And I think, you know, due to our collective efforts, I'll say in my home neighborhood of Dorchester with the partnership of Counsel Baker, we've really been able to make the point that for so many people, this was an issue of blight on a neighborhood. And they would talk about these women on Dorchester Avenue and in New Market and on Blue Hill Avenue that were deterrents in affecting the small business community and affecting property values. And now, because of individual and collective advocacy and banging the drum all this long, I mean, it took us six years to pass anti-human trafficking legislation at our State House. Why? Because it became a debate about suburban versus urban. You know, this is a pervasive issue, it is relevant and impactful, and this is not about blight on the community or property values. This is about broken people, exploited people. And because of the efforts that Counsel Baker and I are working on, the two ordinances that we hope to get some, you know, finalization on, we'll be able to have better resources, not only to reduce the demand, but to support those young people who have been in that life. And so, in any event, I thank you for your leadership and for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Counsel Zachem.
I'd like to have my name added.
Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Zachem's name. Please add Counsel Campbell. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. And please add the Chair's name. Counsel Flaherty moves for suspension and adoption of the first late-file matter. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The first late-file matter has been adopted, and therefore, January 27, 2016, has been declared Human Trafficking Awareness Day in the city of Boston. Now resuming the regular agenda, docket number 0183, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0183, Counsel Zachem and Jackson offer the following order for hearing regarding the Northeastern University Police Department.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by thanking Counsel Jackson for partnering with me on this hearing order, and in a letter we drafted to the President of Northeastern about five, six, seven weeks ago, that still has not received a substantive response on this issue. I think many of you read in the Boston Globe and other news sources about Northeastern University's decision to arm its police department with tactical rifles, which they've undertook over the objections of the Boston Police Department, Commissioner Evans personally, and without conducting any outreach in the surrounding neighborhoods of Roxbury and Mission Hill, which Counsel Jackson and I represent. It's a disappointing situation, as we, in any large institution, making decisions that impacts their neighborhood. I think it's very important that they do engage their neighbors, they do engage their community. We've heard from, I personally heard from residents in Mission Hill, from faculty and students at Northeastern, that this is not making them feel safer. The fact that our Boston Police Department, I would say, one of the most highly regarded and respected police departments in the country, one that has been, received accolades for community policing, I will note that they do not carry weapons like this in their cars. We obviously have them available, and Commissioner Evans and his team feel comfortable in the fact that Boston Police Headquarters is virtually on Northeastern's campus. So we reached out to President Ahun and his team at Northeastern some time ago, asking for meaningful outreach and discussion. Objecting in general on the substance, I don't believe this is the appropriate weaponry for a campus police department, certainly not one in the heart of downtown, so close to residential neighborhoods, to diverse communities, and to our own police headquarters that is more than able to respond to any threat. Beyond that, I think the lack of outreach and community input is disappointing, to say the least, from the beginning, and the fact that, you know, since I've taken office, I've been impressed that Northeastern and their team have generally been out in the community. We haven't always agreed, but they've been out there, having those discussions, and this just did not take place, and there's been no meaningful movement on this in the last few weeks. So I look forward to having a hearing and really providing a forum for residents in the community to express their concerns, to be heard by the folks at Northeastern who are making these decisions, but also so we can hear from the Boston Police Department about whether this is or is not appropriate. I just reiterate that our Boston Police Officers do not carry weapons like this on a regular basis. The fact that Commissioner Evans has publicly and repeatedly objected to this, I think it really needs to be aired out in a public forum. I look forward to a hearing. Again, I want to thank Counsel Jackson for working on this with me, and look forward to a quick hearing and hopefully getting some resolution on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very happy to be advancing this with Counsel Zachem. As noted, we abud each other and actually share Northeastern. The first tenant, and even if they're aiming towards an active shooter situation, that collaboration and communication is absolutely key. And I find it ironic that the police department for Northeastern is five blocks from the headquarters of the Boston Police Department. They could have taken a nice brisk walk up the street and had this conversation with Commissioner Evans. When schools, colleges, and Northeastern in particular wants to build a building, they actually do a lot of community outreach, Madam President. They come and knock on our doors to brief us on this. And in fact, I was surprised, because this information was actually reported on, and that's how Counsel Zachem and I found out about what was happening in both of our districts. The day prior, I had a meeting with Northeastern for an hour and a half, and this actually never came up. And this is really about being a good neighbor, and actually connecting with the neighborhood and community that they're in. And we all care about the safety and well-being of every individual in the city of Boston, but I think it's absolutely critical that President Ahun come and stand before the council, listen to the folks from their community who've called us, the professors, as well as the students, but also the community members who've lived there for years, who are there on a day-to-day basis and interact with this police department. I think this actually sets a pretty bad precedent, and I believe that Northeastern should be held to account, that they should come before this body and explain what is going on. In addition, I think, as noted, Commissioner Evans actually had not been brought up to speed, and then when he was brought up to speed on this, actually was not in favor of this. I think we have an important role in that commissioner to regulate what's going on in the city of Boston. So we look forward to an expedited hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank my two good colleagues and friends, Counsel Zachem and Jackson, for their leadership on this. Ask that my name be added. When I first read about this, I was shocked and surprised, and then further shocked and surprised to read that not only Northeastern, but several other colleges and universities employ these similar weapons. I did want to note that many of us received an email from former District Attorney Ralph Martin, who's now General Counsel for Northeastern. I've spoken several times with my predecessor, former Counsel John Tobin, who is now Vice President, Northeastern. These are two people who many of us know, many of us have worked with. You cannot question their integrity, and I know they want to do the right thing, and they want to be part of this conversation. Similarly, Chief Davis, I don't know, he's the new Chief of Security at Northeastern, but comes from a very long line of community policing. So I think the issue here is that, of course, sadly, there are new threats that didn't exist before, and we want to make exist before, and we want to make sure everyone's safe, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to have this type of weaponry, but there is something, I think, an opportunity for conversation. And I did just want to note that several of the folks of Northeastern have been looking to work with us, to have opportunities to explain it and have an opportunity to have a full public vetting. So, look forward to the hearing and thank the makers for their leadership on this.
Thank you very much, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to obviously to look forward to an expedited hearing. And obviously, I understand the notice piece of it, and clearly, our local representatives and particularly our police commissioners should have been informed, and there should have been some type of communication and engagement. And there should be protocols in place, particularly for college campuses that call Boston their home, in a coordinated effort with the Boston Police Department. That said, we've spent, well, there's been training that's been made available over the last week or so. I participated yesterday for, probably, I think, about like a two-hour, total of a two-hour seminar for active shooter training. And we learned that these incidents that are happening across the country are happening, for the most part, schools and campuses, along with yesterday, medical facility and churches, high-volume places like malls. But what we learn about the college campuses and the actual threat in being able to sort of contain and quell that threat, they talk a lot about the tactical divisions and the SWAT teams. And we know on average that it can take close to 40 minutes to sort of assemble and to get that team in place. And so, if you're a parent of a college student that's on one of these campuses, you want to be able to have someone that can, has the training and the experience, this has to be academy-trained individuals, but you want to be able to match that firepower pretty quickly. Because what we're learning and we see across the country with these trends is that, more often than not, once they're met and that firepower is matched, they often turn the guns on themselves, and that threat is stopped. But if they're sitting there waiting on a campus or in a school building or a facility where there's lots of people who are unarmed, they got a half an hour, 40, 45 minutes to just pick people off. So, again, I sort of look at this from a lens of, if you're a parent with a student on one of these campuses, what is it that you want to do? And so, having this firepower readily available for academy-trained officers, I think, is a wise decision, based on, Counsel O'Malley had mentioned that we're in a day and age where there are new threats. That said, we most definitely shouldn't have, you know, officers walking around college campuses with, you know, high-power and high-velocity firearms clearly visible. They should be somewhere where they're readily accessible, because I have to tell you, probably with the exception of, say, Northeastern, because they're right inside the city, but more often than not, when that 911 call comes in, it's going to be that Boston College Campus Police Officer that's going to be the first on the scene. It's going to be that Boston University College Campus Police Officer that's going to be first on the scene. Boston's on their way, but while we're waiting for them to get on their way, lives are being lost. And if we were able to give, again, academy-trained individuals with the ability to handle high-power, high-velocity firearms, I think we'd be remiss in not allowing that to happen. So, it's an interesting dialogue. Obviously, I'll keep an open mind with respect to it. Clearly, notice should have been given to the City of Boston from Northeastern, just as a matter of basic fairness and a partnership, but there really should be a coordinated plan and effort, if there's not one already, with all of the college universities that call Boston their home, with respect to if an incident happens on their campus. But I don't want to shy away from, again, having academy-trained individuals with the appropriate level of firepower to match, you know, an armed assault from someone with a mental health issues or crazed or hell-bent-on wreaking havoc that is actively taking lives from law-abiding unarmed personnel and people on campuses. And while we wait 30 minutes, 40 minutes, 45 minutes for our teams to get in place, you know, those are very precious minutes and seconds that if we're able to meet and match that firepower, more often than not, that problem will be isolated, identified, stopped, and more often than not, the gunmen or gunmen, gunwomen are going to turn the guns on themselves. So, I look forward to an expedited hearing and a spirited debate on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, I neglected to ask you earlier to add Counsel O'Malley's name. Anyone else wishing to sign on? Counsel Presley, please add Counsel Presley's name. Counsel McCarthy? Docket number 0183 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0184, Counsel Baker offer the following order for hearing to review just cause eviction in the City of Boston.
Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I rise to put forth an order for hearing to discuss just cause eviction. As many of you know, this matter's been brought to the forefront in recent months. Both landlords and tenant groups have expressed positions surrounding a potential just cause eviction ordinance. In an effort to air all concerns prior to an ordinance being filed, I propose having a hearing on this matter as soon as possible so that all sides' concerns may be heard. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Docket number 0184 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Counsel Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, it was over a year ago that the BRA came down to the city council to inform them that they had applied to the State Office of Housing and Community Development to get a one-year extension on the urban renewal plans here in the City of Boston. And as part of that process, we were briefed on what they planned to do and how they would move forward. They were granted that one-year extension, and over this past year, they've been out doing their due diligence, meeting with folks in the affected areas, and this particular order is to get an update prior to their submission of those plans, which will be due and we need to vote on in April. So, that's basically what this is. I'm looking to bring the BRA down to host, to have a meeting, and then inform us all of their due diligence and report out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Docket number 0185 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0186, Counsel Flaherty offer the following order for hearing regarding Sister City program.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Sister Cities program, as you know, has expanded to over 500 communities across the U.S. and established 2,100 partnerships in 145 countries. Since the adoption of this program back in the 50s, 1950s, Boston has partnered with 10 Sister Cities around the world. The purpose of the Sister City program is to facilitate unique opportunities for cultural and educational exchanges, also maintain economic partnerships, and offer humanitarian assistance and foster a greater understanding, awareness of cultures in the world. Cities such as Phoenix, Chicago, and Denver have been recognized for their notable Sister City programs, which have improved foreign language training, cultivated new ideas on city issues, created opportunities for trade and investment, and improved the city's tourism industry. And I just happen to believe that Boston could improve its programming for Sister Cities to benefit the interest of Boston residents and to develop educational, cultural, and economic ties that will further enrich the city and its people. So, I know that we have a division here that is responsible for that. Not quite sure exactly what they do. It'd be great for them to come down to tell us what they can do, but also to get ideas from all of us here on the council and in our respective relationships across the city to try to enhance that. And also want to take this opportunity to thank Rachel Mazerman, who's a resident of the city, who has really been on the forefront of this on behalf of communities, who's brought it to my attention, that we can and should be doing more in this space. So, that said, look forward to an expedited hearing. Urge my colleagues to consider signing on. They're great programs, if run well. I know other cities have got them running at full capacity. I think we should be doing the same, and it's an opportunity for us to really kind of light a fire under this program and add value across the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, would you please add Counsel Siomo's name, add Counsel Asabi George, add Counsel Jackson, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, and please add the chair's name. Docket number 0186 will be assigned to the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events.
Docket number 0187, Counsel Wu offer the following order, that the Law Department for the City of Boston address the open meeting law complaint and respond accordingly on behalf of the Boston City Council.
So, I am going to speak on this matter from the podium, because I filed this as president on behalf of the body. As part of the open meeting law regulations and the Attorney General's interpretations of that, the requirement is for any public legislative body that receives a complaint to address it at an open meeting of that body. And so, we are doing, and the second requirement is to designate the official respondent on behalf of the body. So, Christine O'Donnell, who is our amazing legislative director, has already been in coordination with Corporation Counsel. And between Christine Corporation Counsel and my office, we've determined our suggestion is that Corporation Counsel would be the best entity to respond on behalf of the council. So, docket number 0187 attaches the complaint so that everybody can see it publicly, and I'm going to move for a vote of the council today to suspend and pass it so that we designate Corporation Counsel as our respondent. I would, I normally hate to suspend and pass, but there's a timeline attached to these things. We've already asked for an extension to be able to accommodate this meeting, the vote at this meeting. So, does anyone have any questions on this matter? Okay, so I make the move to suspend and pass. Docket number 0187, Counsel Siomo provides a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0187 has been suspended and passed. Skipping 0188. And Madam Clerk, please read docket 0189, 190, and 191 together.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0189, Counsel Baker offer the following order, approving a petition for a special law regarding an act relative to election procedures in the City of Boston. Docket number 0190, Counsel Baker offer the following order, approving a petition for a special law regarding an act concerning a vacancy in the office of a city councillor at large. And docket number 0191, Counsel Baker offer the following order, approving a petition for the special law regarding an act, an act regarding, I'm sorry, I read that backwards, the terms of office for city councillors.
Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I rise to put forth three refiles from last year concerning charter reform. The first homal petition is an order approving petition for a special law, an act relative to election procedures in the City of Boston. Under this law, any individual duly qualified to be a candidate for an elective office shall not be a candidate for nomination for two such elective offices at the same municipal election. The second is a homal petition, is an order approving petition for a special law, an act concerning a vacancy in the office of city councillor at large. This act would require a special preliminary election if an at-large vacancy occurs after 365 days. The third is a homal petition, is an order approving petition for a special law, an act regarding the terms of the office of city councils. This act would change the current two-year term to a four-year term. On all three of these, we will have hearings on and hopefully vote after the hearings to send up to the state house. I look forward to having these hearings, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Linehan?
Yes, Madam President, I just rise and want to be signed on to 0189 and 0191, please. Thank you.
Okay, let's do sign-ons docket by docket so that we'll stay organized. For docket 0189, Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Linehan's name and Counsel McCarthy's For docket 0190, okay, and docket 0191, please add Counsel Linehan's name and Counsel McCarthy's name. Docket 0189, 190, and 191 will all be assigned to the Special Committee on Charter Reform. Oh, you're right. Okay, quick recess as we figure out which committee. So, Counsel Baker moves to reconsider the assignment of docket 0189, 190, and 191, and those three will be jointly assigned to the Special Committee on Charter Reform and the Committee on Government Operations. Thinking is that it's the topic area, but also in case we proceed to actual legislation, then we'll all hear it at the same time. Okay, personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket, docket number 0194, Counsel Wu for Counsel Jackson offer the following order.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and, moves for suspension and passage of docket 0194. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0194 has been passed. And now, we will proceed with the last two of the three late-file matters, which have already been added to the agenda. So, the second late-file matter, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. January 27, 2016, Counsel Wu for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo moves for suspension and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The second late-file matter has been passed.
Docket number, I'm sorry, the third late-file matter, January 27, 2016, Counsel Wu for Counsel Linehan, offer the following.
Counsel Linehan moves for suspension and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The third late-file matter has been passed. Okay, there is one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Now, at this time, I'd ask all guests and members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Baker, Edward P. Boyle and John P. Hardeman. For Counselors Baker and Asabi George, Nicholas Tomorrow. For Counsel Siomo, Francis M. Davin and Anna G. Ryan. For Counsel Lamatina, Natalia Salvatore Bertino, Grace Cassetta, Roseanne M. Scatino, Marilyn Wan Short, and Anne Magner. For Counsel O'Malley, Sabato Ferreira and Andrea Still Gray. For Counsel Zachem, Mary G. Breen, Doris Canon, and Gloria Murray. For the chair, Jaclyn Smith. And for the council as a whole, Charles W. McCarthy, Representative Nick Collins's grandfather, and John M. Tobin, father of our former colleague, Counsel John Tobin. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns, it does so today in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, February 3, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the council is adjourned.
Ayes have it, the council is adjourned.